Been really, really good. So that is where we've been landing. And it's worked out really well. Really good cooperation with Mayor Chappy and his team on that. Really important that we get down to Coquina Beach. Charlie and his team working with property management are looking at the south boat ramp. As you know, it kind of wise out north and south. So they're looking at one of those, um, uh, those separate pier landing. The challenge is to get it ADA compliant. So we're working on that. And really what that does is it entices more residents to use the water ferry. Because of course, Coquina is one of their beaches of choice. So really, really important that we get down there. Could we get down there and get it ADA compliant by the fall? You know, we're pushing hard, um, to make that happen. Uh, just a little FYI on downtown Bradenton. Obviously, that rectangular box is the day dock. We're gonna, without stealing Gene Brown's thunder, Mayor Brown, uh, we're gonna work with his city to rename that, that pier. Something more geographically located. Uh, so hopefully stay tuned on that. We'll, we'll go to their city sometime this summer to work with them to come up with a better name than, than the day dock. Once again, geographical locator. On the west side of the Green Bridge is where we're overnighting the pontoon catamarans. The day dock is really not equipped to handle some rough weather. Uh, the boats bounce around and all that. So running concurrent with that, Charlie and his really talented team are working on some redesign. One, um, to be able to accommodate and overnight the third ferry. Uh, and number two, be able to consistently overnight it because there is a charge at Twin Dolphin to overnight the ferry as we sit here today. Uh, going across the river, uh, at Palmetto Estuary, um, you know, with the investment, uh, that the board has made at the convention center. That's gonna stimulate the urban core and beyond in the tune of 30 to 40 million dollars a year. Uh, we will have a service that separates us from the norm. Where if you come to a convention and your family comes with you, your family will have the ability to go out on Anna Maria Island for the day via the water ferry. And then you jitney them down from the convention center, the hotel, uh, right to that dock. And then go right out to Anna Maria Island. Riviera Dunes will be able to use it. The residents there as well, Sanctuary Cove. Uh, it's really gonna be in that geographic corridor. People that live in parish parts of Palmetto, uh, we urge them to go to downtown Bradenton. There's more public parking, uh, to be able to board the water ferry there. Okay, so here's, here's where it gets a little bit more exciting. Uh, there's where we were in 2024. We started January 14th, I think it was. And, and that's how many passengers that we carried in 24. Uh, look how many days that we lost, uh, that year. Okay, a lot of it was, was storm related, if not all of it storm related. Okay? What we didn't know, we didn't know. Uh, was the pontoon catamarans the, the best two vessels to buy out of the gate? Absolutely. Um, made a lot of sense. Remember, when the third ferry is in operation, that'll do nothing but go from downtown to the island and back. And then if we can reposition the pontoon catamarans up and down the island as the hopper service, then you're running on all cylinders. With the acquisition of the seafood shack, uh, near Cortez Bridge, we're looking at that as an overnight location for the pontoon catamarans. And number two, as Aqua on the bay, that whole master plan development builds out, then that would be another, uh, stopping point where people can actually just drive over, um, walk over, golf cart over, and get on the water ferry to cut across the bay to go on the island. Let's get the cars off the roads, right? And use that beautiful asset called the Manatee River, Sarasota Bay, et cetera. Uh, so you can see in 143 days, we still moved almost 28,000. That's about 13,000 cars off the road, you know, give or take. Here's where we're at today. Uh, look at that. 25, so we're in the middle of June. And we're at, we've almost surpassed last year's passenger count. Look at that right there. It's, it's pretty cool. Um, didn't lose as many days and we'll see how the summer prevails. Um, and that's pretty much it. Um, we have, uh, we, we, MCAT has the app. So you can actually get on the app and see where the water ferry is at any given time. Really, really important. So if you're at a restaurant, you're at a location, you can kind of gauge when you need to be, um, queued up, uh, to get on the water ferry. Vital to its success. We're pushing out social media. You know, I'm, I'm looking at news digitally every morning from my Lakewood Ranch House. And I see the water ferry banners come up. So, so staff's doing a really good job marketing and promoting. That's the one area that, that we've challenged staff that we kind of want to be obtrusive regionally. We want to get that water ferry service in their, in, in their face. Uh, we got to get these people on board. Uh, I will be giving the board, uh, an update because a lot of, I want to know, staff wants to know, and I know the elected officials, what's the ratio of visitors compared to residents that are, are riding that water ferry? So we're working with the operator, um, uh, because they collect all the zip codes. Um, so we'll, we'll make sure that we give that data as well. To preface for the public, uh, this is being funded by revenues, by tourism tax proceeds, a little bit of beach concession, uh, commissions, and no ad valorem, uh, taxes. Proud, uh, that this, uh, we, we haven't asked the, any of the municipalities, the cities in, in Manatee County to participate financially. We are working with Michelle Davis, a really dynamic grants writer, and her third-party support teams to scour the planet for any grants out there. For vessels, for piers, for docks, any kind of improvements. We have all the match dollars, uh, that we need. Um, so we are turning over, County Administrator Bishop, I mean, that's all he talks about is let's go find grants, let's not miss grants. And we are sure scouring the planet for grants. Um, we, uh, fluidity is the key word still. Um, you know, we learn a little bit every day. Uh, the operator's doing good. This day-to-day oversight will eventually transition to MCAT, uh, October 1. Kevin Hoyt and his team that oversees MCAT will do a much better job than I would have ever done. Uh, we will still market and promote the water ferry. And we stand beside them to be a part of, uh, consultation if need be. But, you know, them overseeing it enhances the integration with the trolley, with MCAT even more. Because they live it every day. Uh, your tourism director is, you know, um, flying around, um, you know, trying to keep focused on this. And, and, and we think that our department, um, has managed it to the best of our abilities. But Kevin Hoyt and his team will do a lot better job. With that, Mr. Chair, I'm, I'm open for questions.
Anyone have any questions for Elliot? No? Mayor, did you want to talk? Oh, go ahead.
When we talked about this, uh, early on with the original ferry, we talked about it as a possibility for workers to get to and from the island. There's obviously a crush of people coming on and off that island. I'm interested to know any, any ideas you might have for with this new service, how, how we might enhance that? Because my experience, I don't know if your operator has been able to figure this out, uh, with any data. But, you know, it's not being used that way currently.
Yeah, as you all know, coming out of Milton, uh, we, we ran it for construction workers, employees that their cars were destroyed. Uh, and we, we moved a little bit of, uh, a minimal amount of people. It's not an if, it's a when. What we learned was with the pontoon catamarans, um, it's the confidence that it's gonna be operating at seven, eight o'clock in the morning. Uh, and if it's not, you may learn too late and all of a sudden you're scrambling trying to get to your job. The third ferry, with it being bigger, heavier, warm, uh, in the dead of winter, air-conditioned, uh, it's gonna be more, a more, um, stable and get the people to it. So, um, uh, it was the idea of some, it may have been you, sir, uh, say, hey, why don't we put employees on there at no charge? We've, we've, uh, we're working with John Horn, who's on the board of Florida Restaurant Lodging Association. Uh, we've done surveys. So we're, we're, we're honing in on the sweet spot of when they need to be to work. That, that, that ferry's gotta leave at seven in the morning. And then there's gotta be one late enough at nighttime to come back. But without that third ferry, it's a crapshoot. Uh, with that third ferry, uh, we're gonna, we're gonna be trying some pilot. Uh, I'm, I'm really hoping it's this fall. And, uh, and let's see how the, uh, the workforce reacts to it. Uh, really, really important. It was a great idea. And, um, you know, we're scouring for grants. We applied for a grant a year ago for a, a fourth enclosed water ferry. And, uh, we did not get awarded. Um, but the one that did get awarded, we looked at how they applied. Uh, and we'll continue because to have two, once we get one more and have two big ones, uh, with the heat and the air-conditioned and two small ones, we, that should, uh, get us the next three to five years doing what we do. Putting a partnership with City of Sarasota, Sarasota County aside at that point. So, well, we're with you. Uh, we work for an impatient county administrator and that's what you want, right? So we're, we're on it and, um, uh, let's see what happens. But I'm hoping October, November, we're, we're trying to pilot program, moving some employees that, that live on the mainland, work on the island.
Any other questions for Elliot? If not, do you want me to turn it over to you to talk about the, the pier, Mayor? Go ahead.
You can go wherever you want. You're the mayor.
Mayor, you gonna upstage me right now? Go ahead, sir. It's good to see you.
Okay, first of all, on behalf of the City of Anna Maria, I, I want to thank the county commissioners and, uh, administration for this meeting. We really appreciate it and, and we've put a lot of work into this. I also, when we went around and did introductions, I want to introduce Amber LaRoe, who is our city clerk. Amber's been on board with us for almost three months now, right? And, uh, but I wanted to make sure, because Amber will be saying a few things later on in today's meeting. So you have in front of you a slide regarding an update on the city pier. We have been working since, uh, November with engineers. We started with our engineers, uh, about the redesign and the rebuild of the pier. As you all know, most of the damage to the pier happened with the walkway. Uh, the walkway had been built differently than the T end of the pier when it was rebuilt eight, nine, 10 years ago. Uh, currently, our engineers estimate that it's going to cost between seven to nine million dollars, uh, to replace the walkway and do the repairs and remediation work that needs to be done to the T end of the pier. And I know it's a broad range, but we are working over water. And some of the, some of the estimates are based on what, what their, their best evaluation of the situation. And that's why we have that, it is a seven to nine million dollar range. My very, very aggressive goal is to have this done by late fall of next year. And I know that's very aggressive and everything would have to fall into place as planned. The weather would have to cooperate and other things. But without a goal, you know, it, it would meander. And so, uh, we are, we are very focused on trying to make this happen by late fall of next year. At this point, the funding is not confirmed with the exception of the $2 million that the TDC approved on Monday, which I know needs to go to the county for your approval. But at this point, we have no other confirmed funding for the rebuild of this pier. We do have, and I'm gonna skip around a little bit. We, we do have in the state budget an appropriation that Representative Robinson put in for $1,250,000. We'll know on July 1, if that clears the state budget and the line item veto process. We are also very actively, and we've been very actively working with FEMA. They have had teams out, inspection teams and others out there on three different occasions, taking a look at the damages both on the water and at the T end, as well as the, the land's, land side of the pier. Uh, we know their evaluation is in process. It's somewhere in the FEMA hierarchy of things. We don't have an indication from them yet in terms of what their evaluation or assessment will be, let alone what they believe is eligible for reimbursement from them. Uh, but at this point, in the slide, you'll see I've put $4 million in there. I don't know if it'll be 4 million. I don't know if it'll be two, if it'll be zero, if it'll be six. We just don't know at this point in time. But we are working very closely with FEMA, making sure anything that they believe they need to complete their evaluation of the pier and the damages, uh, they get as quickly as possible to try to expedite that process as best we can. For the city, and I'll get into this in a little more detail in a minute, short-term funding is going to be critical. Uh, and I'll get to the slide in a minute. But we've, we've actually have laid out a timeline of when we think these costs are going to be incurred, as well as what those costs are for. And I will get back to that in a minute. Elliot went over the water ferry update. I do want to make sure it is clear that the water ferry landing project has to be completely separate from the city pier project. And the reason for that is the Army Corps of Engineers gave us an emergency permit to get this pier rebuilt, with one of the conditions being it has to stay within the exact footprint of what the former pier was. So the plan to re, to add a water ferry has to be done separate. It can't be bolted on to our pier in terms of the paperwork, if you will. As Elliot mentioned in, in his presentation, there were two scenarios. An A, which was a separate pier, and a B, which was a bolt-on to our pier. Uh, the commission, the consensus of our commission was we prefer, if there's going to be a water ferry landing, that it be bolted on to our pier. And we know that actually saves the county some money because now a new pier does not need to be built. In terms of where we are, to date, the City of Anna Maria has spent $223,000. This is primarily for the design of and engineering of the walkway, which is about 80% complete, almost 90% complete. We had to do all the inspections of the T end of the pier and what was still underwater. And we had to do geo, geotech testing of the soil under the water to make sure it was, it was fine to be built on again. Uh, but before the end of the month, the demo process will begin. We've engaged a quality marine out of Palmetto, I believe, right? Uh, who also did the demo work, uh, over by the seafood shack. And they will be demoing what is still in the water to get that area cleared so we can move on to the next step, which is putting piles in the water. So, um, when I mentioned we have, I've laid out a timeline. As I said, 223 to date, we believe we could, it could be as much as 1.1 million over the course of the next three months. That would be for the demo work. That would be for T-end work that needs to be done. We need to get out there and remediate and remove things that were damaged. The water went over the pier, the T end of the pier. The things in the building were destroyed. Damage, destroyed. And we have to get a crews out there to get, it's been sitting there, to, to not only remove what's been destroyed, but also remediate the buildings. To do that will require the use of a barge. And we're hoping to work with our demo, uh, provider, uh, to take advantage of them already having a barge.
I don't want to interrupt you, but are those, that was on my list to ask. Are those costs to remediate the, you're talking about moat and the, the concession out there? You're talking about that. Is that inclusive in the seven to nine million dollars?
Yeah, the, everything you'll see is inclusive in the seven to nine in total. That's correct. Yes. And then, um, for the period October to December, which we're hoping by that point, piles are going in the water and things are moving forward with the infrastructure. We've estimated about $2 million would be incurred in the last three months of this calendar year. Go to the next, uh, page, please. Thank you. So what are we asking for? And I've told every, everybody's heard me talk about this. I tell them it's a puzzle. The problem, what, putting the puzzle together is we don't know what the pieces all look like yet. And by that, I mean, is the state going to come through? What is FEMA going to come through? What I do know is it's a seven to nine million dollar project. I now know, potentially with, with the county commission's approval, that 2 million of that is, is, uh, set aside from the TDC. Uh, I still have a delta, uh, but I don't know enough yet, unfortunately, about how to, and I think, I believe the term used Monday was the capital stack. And, and where else, you know, to build up, to ultimately get to, what kind of help are we looking for from, ultimately from the TDC and the county to rebuild this pier? So unfortunately, I don't have a number for you. I, I don't know what that is at this point. Um, and we, as I said, we are working diligently to try to fill in other stacks before we get to the county, uh, with respect to what else might be needed. The last thing I, I just want to call out is the pier was, has always been no railings. Uh, I don't know the history of that, why there were no railings versus why there, there's, and I don't know if there should have been or whatever. I just know there were no railings. And again, to rebuild it back to its original way, the, the design currently contemplates no railings. If the water ferry, if it ends up is attached to the beer, to, to the beer, to the pier, um, and to do that requires ADA compliance to the pier, meaning potentially railings, that's something that is not, uh, Chair Cruz, back to your question, is not contemplated in that seven to nine million dollar budget.
Elliot, is the cost of a bolt-on addition to this, or, or anybody, it doesn't matter, or, or, you may be able to answer. The, the, the cost of the actual ferry landing, if it's bolted on on the, the back of that, is that included in this? Or is that additional cost that the county would incur?
That is not part of that, that.
Yeah.
What's that number?
Uh, Charlie H. would probably tell you it's in that a million, million-five range.
Okay, so million, million-five. You're saying two, so four. All right. Uh, okay, all right.
Okay. And I, I want to be clear. The City of Anna Maria will have skin in the game. You know, as I said, we've already spent 200 and some thousand. We got another 240 coming up once the demo starts. We know, uh, we will have skin in the game. We understand that. And again, as this capital stack starts to come together, I will have a better vision in terms of, you know, what that number is. I, I cannot commit at this time, let alone do I have a complete clue in terms of what that number might be.
Who is going to clean up and presumably rebuild the moat marine portion of it? Are they doing that themselves? Is that borne by you or TDC? Or where's that coming from?
Well, the, uh, the building and the T end is city property. The contents in both of those, so you have moat on the one side, you have a grill on the other side. Everything inside of those buildings, it's either moat's equipment or it's the grill's equipment. So.
Has there been talks with them? Are they committed to coming back?
So moat, uh, was out there two weeks ago. Uh, we arranged to get them out there to take a look so they could evaluate what was in there and take a look at it. Um, I, I do have in my inbox an email from them. I haven't had an opportunity to, to follow up with them in terms of what they're, what they're thinking. Uh, I believe we're trying to set up a meeting, correct, Elliot?
Commissioner, yeah, we'll be meeting with moat and the mayor. Uh, we have an investment in that education center with moat.
That's part of why I'm asking.
Yes, sir.
That created this pier being just, you know, a pier someone could fish off of, or we could drop a boat on, to being a, a true tourist destination and a, a resident destination. Go out there, have a snack, go see moat, especially when someone got off the, the ferry or was waiting for the ferry to come.
Yes, sir.
You know, I would wait for the ferry to come. I had used it a number of times and always got off for, for pine. And we would just hang out in moat. It was air-conditioned. It was pretty. It's, it's fun to, to look at with the kids and you go. If, if that just becomes a vacant building, that obviously takes away some of the dynamics of what that pier was unfortunately becoming before things happened.
We'll be seeking balance of showcasing moat's brand elements. At the same time, it could be a queuing area, um, while people are waiting for the water ferry. So we're gonna work through that. Um, we'll be meeting with moat soon.
Well, I don't want a queuing area of just an empty room you sit in, like a port authority. I mean, I wanted to, I want the moat back.
We would integrate.
I would hope if we can't, if they won't do it, that the state or, or federal level would contribute to it. I mean, moat does pretty good with getting funds. And I, I think that was a, an important amenity for City of Anna Maria and for Manatee County as a whole, and for moat for that matter. I mean, their ability to extend their brand. So, okay, so there's no definitive answer.
No, but we are, we are, it's on our to-do to sit down with moat and talk to them now. And it took them a while and to get eyes on. And like I said, that just happened, it was literally two weeks ago. So, uh, they got, they sent a team out there and now they at least got eyes on in terms of what they have to deal with.
And they didn't have anything insured? Does, does anyone insure anything anymore?
Well, I cannot speak to moat. Um, I don't know if moat had any insurance on the contents or not.
Because this pier wasn't insured.
The pier was not insured.
All right, so where do we stand? You're, you're saying you have skin in the game with, it's the 200 and something thousand now and you're obviously have to put up another 200 and something thousand in the near term because you're moving forward.
Correct.
Uh, with the plan and, and hopes that you're, that the, the funding sources are gonna outrun your funding capacity so that they're ready when you get to the next stage and you're not just stopping with the design.
And the next stage is the biggest stage. That's putting the infrastructure in. And, and I, if we go, is it to the next, and I don't know how well this is gonna show up on the screen. I'm hoping it shows up the next slide. Um, it's very hard to see.
We've got lots of TVs.
Okay, but the next, the next stage is the construction installation of the infrastructure, which is by far the biggest piece of this pie. Currently, our engineers are estimating 4.7 to 6.2, almost 6.2 million dollars to do that. As I said, we're estimating and hoping and anticipating that that process would actually start in the fourth calendar quarter of this year. But in the interim, you can see in the estimated payouts, June to September, is the remediation and repairs to the T end of the building that we need to do to avoid the conditions getting any worse. So we have, we're anticipating spending money to get out there, get that cleaned up, get it remediated. Part of the challenge is, as I said, it's gotta be done with the use of a barge, uh, because we can't walk out there. Uh, so, uh, and again, those are, I know the estimates probably seem high, right?
No, they don't.
Okay. Oh, they seem low?
I'm just trying to read it. This got so zoomed in, I couldn't see that one.
And again, I do have hard copies, by the way. I apologize. I did bring hard copies of the spreadsheet that are bigger, uh, from what was in the packet. So, uh, you know, we've, we've, we've broken this out. We've worked very closely with our, we've actually had some of the contractors come out that helped build the pier. And we've had them provide us input with respect to what needs to be done in a timeline and so.
Remember, they helped build the pier that fell down, so.
Well, again, and, and I should have mentioned this, the T end survived, right? Could the T end was built differently than the walkway.
Can we build the walkway the same way we built that?
We are, that, we are rebuilding. The plan is to rebuild the walkway the way the T end was built.
It's like building the whole plane out of the Black Fox. Like, it's, it's built the pier better, yeah.
So again, if the T end survived, that said a lot to us. And, and, uh, following the same engineering, construction and so on, uh, with the walkway when it's rebuilt, hopefully will demonstrate that it will survive these things.
What are you hearing from, I mean, obviously that $4 million FEMA thing is a huge chunk of this thing.
It's huge.
Approximately half, um, give or take. Weird, what, what's your thought process on that? What did any consultants you're working with say on it? Where do you think the timing is to get a definitive answer or at least, I mean?
Well, well, my underst, I mean, like I said, it's somewhere, we know our main contact with FEMA has reviewed everything and has moved it up. I, I'm not the FEMA expert.
I'm not saying, just when I look at your timeline, you're only looking at about three, was it? Three and a half to four, call it $4 million by the end of this calendar year. So about, right, three, 3.1, 3.6, all your numbers add up to a lot more than $7 million. But, I mean, the TDC funds, the money you're already putting in, whatnot, that, that's starting to get you a long way towards the end of the year. The, the big chunk is beginning of next year.
Yeah. Well, well, there's two things. So first of all, my understanding is, is if the state does appropriate, we, we have access to that money as soon as October 1st, okay? The FEMA money, remember, it's a FEMA program. It's a reimbursement program, right?
No, understood. I, I understand that. It's just it's, there's a lot more comfort in it being reimbursed than, than the unknown. But it's still FEMA, to your point. I mean, it could be 18 months for you, you know, if you're even gonna get it, another three years before you actually get it. Have you, have you been talking to, oh, it's Charlie, has there been conversation with Sheila or anybody? I mean, I mean, there's, there's ways of skinning this thing. It's just a matter of what you're putting in, what we're putting in. I mean, my, and I'm, I speak for one of one here, not one of, I'm just one of seven. But this has to be rebuilt. I, I don't think there's any alternative. It's, it, it's critical to our tourism. It's critical to our residents. I mean, I walk on that pier all the time and. on that pier all the time, and we've got great amenities out there, I'd feel much better if Moat and everyone committed to coming back where they were, and let's all collectively, even if it all costs us a few dollars, putting this thing back. But we need the landing spot for the dock, I 100% agree, it needs to be bolted on, and because again, we want people to go to Moat, we want people to go to the grill, we want people to use that pier, it doesn't make sense to have all these separate piers someplace, people won't use that pier as much. I just think we need to sit down with your finance people, our finance people, to come back with a proposal. We've got reserves, we, even if it comes down to some sort of a very long-term interlocal kind of loan that could be refundable or repaid based upon the FEMA money, like a portion of it from us, a portion of his loan, so we can at least front the capital so we don't delay. I mean, we want to get this thing done, so, you know, if FEMA comes through, then it pays it off, if FEMA doesn't come through, then there's some dynamic of what the split is in terms of that, but we need to work something out. I mean, we've got, we just took out a big line of credit associated with this, not with the pier, but with the remediation because of our FEMA delays as well, so there's capacity there, there's capacity within our reserves as a whole, there's capacity within TDC funds, even if it's temporary funding with an intention of being either repaid from our source, your source, or FEMA source, or state source. I just think we all need to get together, put our heads together, and come up with a way of doing it. I don't think this is a question of, should we do it? I think it's a question of where's the money coming from. And there's two tiers to that, where's the money coming from in the short term, where's the money coming from in the long term? And we've got the capacity to do it in the short term, it's just a matter of what the ultimate cap stack looks like on the long term on the backend of this. But, I mean, you have my full support to build this thing, my full support to the extent I have it with this board to come up with a way of fronting it to make it happen, it's just a matter of what it looks like on the backend, because it's still taxpayer money, it's not my money that I'm using.
And we understand and we appreciate that. And again, part of the intent for us coming to this meeting is to let you know where we are. We know, I wish we were a lot further along in this process. We have, we have had discussions with Sheila, probably wouldn't have been you, but I want to say a couple of months ago about some ideas, so, but yeah, it's, we're, trust me, we are, this is an everyday thing on our agenda that we're working on.
Sure, but I think we need to get.
But I do agree.
I think we need to get the grill, and I think we need to get Moat in a room, I think we need to get you guys in a room, get us in a room, and just put our heads together and say, let's make sure this pier comes back the way it was, but better, more secure. Get our boat back there, get Mot Marine back there, and get your pier back there, because I think it's doing a disservice to your whole city by having our boat, my, my daughter uses that boat probably more than almost anybody, she's constantly on that thing. But she goes to Bridge Street, and once she gets off, because that's the only stop, she goes to Dak redack, or goes to Island Time, and then she goes down to Coquina, because that's where the boats drop, and what's the point? Before the storm, when we would take the boat, we would get off at your stop. We'd go down Pine and grab a slice of pizza and some ice cream and go up to Bean Point. You're, you're losing people on Pine, you're losing people in city of Anna Maria as a result of this. So, I think you have a big vested interest in getting that stop back there, that's why I never understand what Holmes Beach said, they don't want to stop. Mike, do you realize people get off that thing and just kind of stay where they get off?
Well, and, and that's why I set that aggressive timeline, because I, to the, to your points, we know, and it's extremely important, not only for the city and for the commercial businesses that are in that city, but also for the county and so on, and we know it's important for everybody, and that's why my vision is we have to be aggressive, we, we got to get this done sooner. I mean, if I, I could, we could wait, but who knows when that would happen?
No, no, that's what I'm saying, I think we need to walk out of here.
Yeah, nobody wants us to wait.
Saying, we collectively, I think the end goal is, let's do it, and let's have it done by fall of 2026. Now, the question is, how? How does it get done? Not does it get done, if it gets done?
Right.
My opinion is, we start with the, the end of this is going to get done, it's going to get done by season 2026, like in the fall 2026. Now, it's just a matter of how we shuffle the money around to make this thing happen, and where the reimbursable money comes from. I talked to Representative Robinson yesterday, actually, about that appropriation. And, you know, it's in there, and it got, it got through the budget, I mean, now we have to wait to see what kind of vetoes or anything hit, but it wasn't in the tax watch turkey list, so that's good.
Oh, good, good.
Yeah, so, you know, hopefully that happens. I mean, this big push for, you know, they try, they waive sales taxes for boating and things like that, I mean, clearly, there's an appreciation towards things like this, so hopefully, this isn't something that gets cut off, and we have good delegates up in Tallahassee that typically don't have things vetoed for bad reasons, so, so I'm hopeful, that's, that's a million of it. And now, it's just a matter of, obviously, FEMA is a big chunk, but whether FEMA gives it to you or not, there's going to have to be a float period with alternative capital, and, you know, you have the location, and you've got the design, but we fortunately have the capital, so, let's, we'll just get in a room and figure this out.
We look forward to getting that set up and sitting down with you, and I know, but we're open, so whenever that would work, then we'll get the right people in the room and have that discussion.
That's, that's above my pay grade, so, I've got the county administrator back here, I also have Commissioner Sadiq with his cartoonish hand up there. Commissioner Sadiq?
Thank you, and first of all, I'd just like to apologize for not attending in person, intended to, and for Bradenton Beach later, I'm just laid up at home with a back injury, so, I guess our board meetings will do that to us. Of course, I, I agree with you, and Mayor Short and I have had a number of conversations about this as well since, since I got on board. Would you, I think the 2026 timeline is something we need to meet, and as far as the funding sources, I don't know if, Mayor, you mentioned it, but you're already committing quite a bit more than just over a quarter million, beyond the demolition, you have also committed, I just have the numbers here, well, you're expected to commit from now until September another million, as I understand it, based on the report from the TDC meeting yesterday, I think from, it's 223,000 for the demolition, and 1.1 million from now until September, that covers 239,000 for demolition, there's a $223,000 cost before that, and then there's the 800,000, I think I read, related to the T end repairs, so, looking at a fairly substantial sum already. Hopefully, with the 1.25 million, the state, that'll get us along further. A lot of, a lot of great projects in this county have been done with, with partnership in mind, whether it's the City Garage downtown with Bradenton Ciara and the county working together back in the day, or the pier in city of Anna Maria, so I think we just have to figure out what the right number would be, and as a board, agree on that, working out with Sheila, would see what funds those can come out from, if I need to, yeah, it's good timing, since we're still working through the budget process. I would be curious to see if Moat doesn't pull through, if we can work to find another partner that might want that real estate and potentially put money in. I mean, the only alternative I see is it just becomes a waiting area for the ferry in the future, but if there's some other monetization opportunity that can draw more capital, and I could see that as an opportunity, maybe we can work through, Elliot, see if there's a, someone willing to, it's very valuable, real estate, you are literally right there getting off the ferry, so I have to imagine there's someone that might be willing to put some skin in the game if we can't get Moat involved, but just my two cents on that. Other than that, I think we just have to figure out what the capital, what that looks like. We, we've, we've taken on a line of credit, I'm not sure if the city can for this, but that is one strategy we've taken, while we wait for FEMA to reimburse us, and we don't have a great answer for that, having spoken to your federal delegation about this particular issue, everyone's dealing with it, and we don't know if FEMA will be around in six months, but I'm open to suggestions for creative ways to get more capital involved. I think the $2 million recommendation was sound, so I'll just leave it at that.
And Commissioner, thank you for your comments, and, you know, I did mention, Aaron, the presentation that short-term funding is going to be critical for us, and you're absolutely right, if this were to play out as we think, it is about 1.1 million dollars to be spent, you know, in the next three months, and, including the, the demo work, but, you know, that's, that is a big chunk of change for the city to swallow, and so, getting something figured out in the near term is going to be important to us, because 1.1 is a little steep for the city in the near term, until we know more about what's going on, but it's more about when, when will it come in?
Sure, will you, Charlie, will you work with Sheila, set up, I mean, we're going on recess in 48 hours, but then we're gone for a few weeks, we come back July 29th, so hopefully during that window of time, I'm sure our county administrator or CFO would be more than happy to come out to the beach for a few hours.
Well, we, we, we are not on recess, so, we're there.
Oh, they're not on recess, either.
No, I know.
Just me.
We have some vacations, good.
But, but let's, let's get our CFO and our county administrator and whomever else from our staff together with, with your staff, and try to come up with some thoughts and proposals, so that when we come back from recess at the end of July, so we're not wasting time, because again, you have a short-term need, that they can present some options to this board, and hopefully, this board could do something, maybe we have the TDC money come up. So, it lends on July 29th or whenever it ends up coming in front of us to have a dual conversation, because they're going to be related to each other. It doesn't make sense to put $2 million of TDC funds on a pier that doesn't get built, and it's just a matter of how, and to your point, you have short-term needs, so we have short-term time to discuss this, so.
Agreed.
Get your people with my people, and then they can come back with some proposals.
Definitely.
Mr. Chairman, just to the mayor's credit, you know, not knowing what these puzzle pieces even look like, he has been full steam ahead in trying to make sure that we don't miss an opportunity to keep making progress on this, that's why we've got this demo project already out there, you know, spending a significant chunk of our budget upfront, hoping to get reimbursed by the feds, it's really encouraging to hear your, your commitment on the county funding and working with us to help make sure that this process doesn't slow down for, you know, the indecision around funding that, that's, you know, just kind of natural in a project of this size. So, I think the mayor's done a good job, you know, responding to questions from all of us at, at our level, because our constituents ask us, are we going to have to pay for all this, right? It's a small group of people, our ad valorem is, Mark can check me on the numbers, but our ad valorem for the year would be dwarfed by what it would cost to rebuild this pier. To his credit, he's been full steam ahead, and it's really encouraging to hear you say that you're, you're in that boat as well, so we really appreciate it.
Yeah, let's keep it moving, let's see what we can do.
Mr. Chair, I have one question.
If I can add one more thing?
Wait, hold on, go ahead.
Yes, more directed towards Charlie, so I spoke, spent some time out there looking at alternate location for the ferry, is that still viable, Charlie? So, we're not landing on the dock, we're landing beside it?
I, we just, no, we talked about that, we said that was.
It's not.
That's part of the presentation.
It's rough.
Mr. Chairman and members of council, yes, it is, the structure will be a bolt-on facility. It, it's modified from the drawing that we had, it's more linear along the south side, a docking facility where the, a docking facility where the original ferry was docking, and then we've, we're considering a, a gangway parallel to the dock for the queuing of passengers, loading and offloading, when even two ferries show up, I thought it was brought up by the city council, it was a good point, we don't want them stacked on the pier themselves, 100 people waiting to get on or get off a ferry. And so, we have a, kind of like a parallel dock design, all on the, all on the south side, with ADA accessible ramps and, and structure. But it is designed to be independent, floated in and attached to the dock that's under design and construction by the city. No interface other than a couple bolts.
All right, all right, sounds good.
Any other questions?
Oh, that's right. Commissioner Sadiq, you had something?
So, just something just came to mind, and I've been thinking about all the improvements you're making within that community with the pavers, enhancing pedestrian and bicyclist access there. This pier benefits businesses all along Pine Ave, I mean, sorry, the, the pier repair benefits businesses all along Pine Avenue, and there are quite a number of prominent businesses there. You have Bay Fest coming there this October, trying to think, is there a way we can work with the Anna Maria Island Chamber to at least get some, I don't know, some kind of fundraising, some kind of support from the business community out there? I mean, it's a very tight community in the AMI Chamber, and all businesses really throughout the island. It's a city, you know, granted, it's a city pier, it's in city of Anna Maria, but it benefits the business community, you know, of, on the island at large, but just something to think about.
And I would add to that, Commissioner, yes, there is a direct benefit, you can correlate that ferry running to what happens on Pine Avenue, but don't forget, we also have the island trolley system that's out there, that people can ride for free, and that, and, and what was happening was, some would stick around, hang out on Pine or go to the beaches there, a lot of them would wait for that, the trolleys to show up, so they could go down to Holmes Beach or other places, or the public beach, or wherever they wanted to go. So, intertwined, that intertwining of the ferry system with the island trolley system is also critical as well in terms of moving people around, because this, it, yes, the city of Anna Maria, you could argue, would be the primary beneficiary, but I would argue it's the entire island that is the beneficiary of making all this happen.
And I tend to agree with that, I mean, moving this under transit, the ferry system makes a lot of sense, and we've, we've talked about how, what the future of that looks like, the public transit looks like, but today, we just have city of Bradenton Beach's pier and Bridge Street, and, you know, going back to prior administration, the biggest concern, and the, the push to have this pier was for transporting workers, now granted the schedule and the timings needed to build up to that point, but with a larger boat, which is running faster and additional, adding that to our fleet will reduce the time and make that more of a reality. So, I tend to agree with you, this is, you know, I like to think regionally about projects and see if we can get buy-in from the broader community, but, yeah, just something to think about, maybe we can reach out to, I'm not going to say the other cities, but I think the business communities throughout the island, and see if there's a way to get some additional private funds to, into this. I'm not saying it's going to bring you $4 million, but if it gets you a half million, that's great, and it's just a way to get community buy-in as well. Essentially, Charlie, a couple more ideas, but I'll let staff work that out with the city, but, yeah, I, I think, I think people on the, on the island and even West Bradenton would like to, to find some way to help and pitch in where they can. That's all, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Did you have anything further on this topic?
Any other questions?
No. Okay, thank you. All right, thank you, Mayor. Item two, we're up to item two, now, look at that.
George?
Commissioner Faltz.
Thank you, you can you hear me now?
Yes.
Thank you. Just a little add into this, I know we have a lot of preps to do on the end, end game of our ferry system and all that, but I would like, as the District One Commissioner, just to let the island cities know, that we'd like for District One to also be able to utilize our waterways to cut down on our transportation problems, and one thing we're talking about perhaps in the future is being able to use our river and having some ferry stops that could get our people from District One out to our, enjoy our islands as well. So, I just want to let you know that my participation in this is as a representative of District One, but we do have a high interest in being able to use this same type of system to relieve our traffic issues, to get our tourists out, we're talking about building hotels in District One, we, we'd like to be in on this so that we could also, perhaps in a future time, once we have the docks and everything set up on the islands, to look into bringing a ferry system from further upriver, we have some viable properties up there for docks, and I think this would be, I'm a great advocate of maybe utilizing our waterways to alleviate traffic congestion, and also to increase our tourist participation from other parts of the county. So, something that we are looking at in District One that I'm an advocate of is getting these ferries a little bit farther upriver, so we can transport those people who are coming into my district, so that they can also enjoy the islands without adding to our, our roadway issues. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Item number two. Director Fisk?
Good morning, Jody Fisk, Director of Public Safety, so I'm going to try to be quick, just a quick recap of our 2024 storm season, just in case anybody forgot. Started with Hurricane Debbie, which made landfall for us on August 5th, rainfall. Rainfall created significant flooding for us in multiple parts of the county. And even though Debbie was only a Cat 1, when it went past, it was a slow-moving storm, significant rainfall, just enough surge to kind of stall our watershed from going back out into the Gulf. The estimated damage for Debbie between residential and business was about $56 million. So that was how we kicked off the season. September 26th was Hurricane Helene, which brought us a storm surge of about eight, eight and a half feet in addition to an additional 12 inches of rain. When you are looking at that storm surge, that, I actually made the comment at the time, that was the closest that the county had come to a direct landfall in a century. So the next storm might have been a little bit my fault because right on the heels of Helene, we had Hurricane Milton. Hurricane Milton was the first landfall that Manatee County had seen in over a century and that was our wind event. So areas of the county that hadn't experienced flooding, then those that didn't experience the surge, then were all impacted by the wind. We know that a significant number of our mobile home parks took a lot of damage. And this was October 9th, so about a week and a half after Hurricane Helene hit. So the back-to-back impacts really, that's the fastest we've ever gone up for response into recovery, back into response and then back into recovery. I will say that it was incredibly helpful for us during the storm to have both FDEM and FEMA liaisons with us. They were able to help us expedite the opening of some of our disaster recovery centers. I think some of you may know, we were in, I think, the first in our region to actually open a disaster recovery center, which accounted for a lot of the traffic, the foot traffic that we saw from our neighboring counties, Hillsborough County, Pinellas County. A lot of those residents knew our disaster recovery center was opening up and they came down to apply. The debris was significant throughout the county and the state and FEMA, we managed to get our debris picked up within 180 days. That is not to say, I'm sure there were some isolated pockets or some residents who may say like, my debris didn't get picked up that fast. I accept that. And as always, we continue to strive to improve with every storm. So that leads us to some specific facts about our 2024 impacts and response. There is still long-term recovery that is happening in some of our areas that some of our residents are still experiencing. That's not abnormal for the level of impact that we saw. And as always, if anybody has any questions or concerns, they can reach out. We will make sure to connect them with the proper agency. We saw a need after Milton for some of our municipalities to utilize what's called an incident management team or an IMT. Those teams are comprised of folks that are familiar with EOC operations or emergency operation centers that can actually come in and supplement staff to give your staff some downtime, but a lot of them are actually very experienced in response as well. And so we were very, very fortunate to have some wonderful teams. We actually got one team from Sugar Land, Texas that came in. We also had another one that I believe came out of Miami Dade. And at that point, you're still in those 24-hour operational periods and so that staffing assistance was very important. The sand that we saw after Helene, if Google is still a trusted source, that was 61 Olympic-sized swimming pools filled with sand that impacted our coast. We were able to operate 90 days straight with our emergency management coordinator, Brad Zink, leading the coordination effort for the municipalities and the county in the sand cleanup. And we were actually able to complete the sand cleanup within that 180 days of the 100% reimbursement for FEMA. So that was a monumental undertaking. Charlie Hunsicker was instrumental in that, in helping us to get through that process. We learned a lot and I think that, you know, in another 100 years, hopefully when we take another impact like Helene on our coast, we've got a really, really good roadmap to follow for the next big sand operation. So that brings us to 2025 and the preparedness actions that we at the county have been doing along with our municipal partners. Our emergency management team and public safety has facilitated so far this year just over 60 presentations throughout the county to different homeowners associations, community groups. Our CERT teams have been very active within the county. They are getting out and doing the same preparedness trainings. Public Works and Utilities, along with the contractor, are still working hard to clear our ditches and our waterways from debris from last year and residents are able to reach out and, you know, point us in a direction if we're not there. EOC operations have taken place, or the trainings rather, excuse me, as well as our annual hurricane exercise, which included participation from all of our municipalities and all of our partner responding agencies in the county, which was exceptional. We were really, really pleased with the turnout this year. The emergency management teams, I think some of you may know, I believe Mayor Short will be meeting with you next week. We are doing our meetings with our municipal partners to see, are there any gaps that anyone is concerned about that they want to maybe address ahead of time? I know that, you know, I have one that's already made the request for the incident management team to be on hand. They would love to have that support again. And our technology enhancements for this storm season. So this graphic, there's a lot of really small print. The very center is representative of the platform Peregrine that we have been utilizing. We were utilizing Peregrine during Helene and Milton, but it was so brand new, we had really, really just very critical information that was coming into us that we already have. So if you see to the outer sides of this graphic, all of these are data sources within county government that we already have. There are GIS layers and each department is responsible for managing their own layers. However, you see, everything is very disparate. It's very siloed. It is, this department has this information, this department has this information, and in order to gather that information before, it was a cumbersome process. You had to seek out that specific thing that you were looking for. What Peregrine is doing for us is it's taking all of these data sources and we now have dashboards that we have in the EOC with the real-time data that's coming in from all of our departments. So it's less of a strain on our staff. It is more efficient information that's coming in. It is more up-to-date information that is coming in. I want to be clear, that's not all of it. We continue to add data streams as we move on. I believe I spoke at the, at the last commission, meeting before last on some of the more important updates to include the CAD 911 data that's coming in, our lift station data and our damage assessment data will be critical for us this year, especially as there's a lot of uncertainty with what's happening at the federal level. We are going to continue to operate as normal. We are not going to be basing our response efforts on the question of reimbursement. If it is a need for our residents, we will make sure to get that resource into our residents as fast as possible with cooperation from the state. For our operational posture, it remains the same. Our general rule of thumb is if they're calling for a category one, we are planning for a category two. We can always scale back if we need to. So we've identified a lot of missions from the last three storms for mitigation measures to go into place before we see landfall. Tiger dams is probably the most easily recognizable of those resources that you may see around the county when we see a storm coming in. But there was a lot of things regarding staffing, support from the state level. So we already have those missions, so we are ready to just hit send when the time comes for us to make that mission request. Our municipal partners have all been very active in our multi-agency coordination calls, which we greatly appreciate. It does make the decision-making so much easier. Everybody is in the loop and everybody's operating off the same sheet of music. And again, those incident management teams, I can't stress those enough. And for those who may not know, you do have an option as an elected official to say, you know what? I want someone to come in and help support me. We've been working 24 hours straight for a week and I need a break. So there is a mechanism in place to do that as well. Recovery operations, you know, the general rule of thumb is when you, you know you're coming out of a response operation, when you're starting to see resources be demobilized and taken out of the community. A point of distribution or our pods is a good indicator when you see the National Guard packing up and those sites are going away. But the disaster recovery center and the multi-agency resource center or the MARC are also very clear indicators that we are prepared to start moving into that solid recovery phase and we're moving out of the response operations. One of the things that we have been working on is to pre-identify as many locations throughout the county as we can for these sorts of facilities. In an effort to not be delayed when the time comes and we need to open one of these facilities, we already have, you know, if you have a dozen identified and only three of them take impact, we now can say to the federal government or to the state, these remaining locations meet your requirements. Pick one and let's get it opened up. That's usually one of the biggest hurdles in getting a disaster recovery center open are the requirements from the federal level for what must be at that site. There are certain requirements that must be met for the staff that have to be there. Our co-ad or communities organizing after a disaster has exponentially grown over the last about eight and a half months since the storms. The number of volunteer and nonprofit groups that have stepped up, that have asked to be a part of it, that are willing and ready and able to begin getting our residents assistance is just outstanding. And you will see a lot of those groups out in our community. Those are coordinated by the Emergency Support Function 15 desk in the EOC and that is under the leadership and partnership with the United Way. And all of our municipal partners have participated in trainings. I have seen a number of you at the, I saw you at the Governor's Hurricane Conference, taking the classes that were there, the online courses, reaching out to us and very proactively asking, you know, what can we do better from last year and telling me, this is what I need from you to be better this year. So that concludes the hurricane brief. I did try to opt out of hurricane season this year, so hopefully that sticks. But I'm ready to take any questions.
What direct relationship do we have with City of Anna Maria in terms of, as we're monitoring, as we're mobilizing? I mean, some of the municipalities kind of handle things themselves, some of them kind of leverage a little bit more off us. Where do we stand and where's best practices on where we should stand?
So we actually moved away from a practice that had actually been stopped in the county for a while, especially during COVID. Cities were kind of pushed away from coming to the emergency operations center if they didn't absolutely have to be there. We have changed that policy now to say there is a seat available for a representative from all municipalities to be in the EOC. That is a best practice across the state. You will find that, you know, like Lee County, City of Cape Coral, their city manager goes and sits in the county EOC because the cities can't request anything directly to the state. They have to request it to the county. We then make the request on behalf of the city. So a best practice is to have that representative in the EOC and that's the representative of the municipality. It's their decision who that is. The distinguishing factor of that person is they must be an authorized decision-maker for that jurisdiction. So you have somebody there that has the authority to say, yes, this is the mission we want or this is the direction that, you know, our jurisdiction is taken for, say, curfews or reentry.
Did all six municipalities have someone in our EOC last year during these storms?
Yes, I believe so. I would have, I really would have to go back and look at the roster, but in a lot of cases, they utilize the representative from their fire district, so it's usually the fire chief, or a law enforcement officer from that jurisdiction. So, you know, it is, again, it's the decision of the municipality who they send. So they are not necessarily the one that participates in that multi-agency coordination call. That is always the mayor's, yourself, Administrator Bishop. But they do have that person there and that person really is solely focused on getting information to their jurisdiction for what's going on and then taking those requests and bringing them to us.
Understood. Are there any questions, thoughts, suggestions? No, we're good. Just make sure we don't have any storms this year.
I'm trying.
All right.
So I have one, if you can hear me.
Yeah.
So Bradenton stood up their P-SOC in, well, at GT Bray. Has there been communication between city, the two cities to leverage that as an option? Ours is very far east, so I'm just curious if that's been made an option for the city of Anna Maria.
So this city could send a representative to the city of Bradenton if they chose to do so. However, they still have that same hurdle that that representative would still have to reach out to the county from the City of Bradenton Operations Center to make any kind of mission request.
What are the communication channels like between our P-SOC, well, our EOC and then the Bradenton P-SOC during a storm?
They are the same normal channels, whether it's a phone call, a text message, an email. The city is not able to put in their mission, like they can't put a mission request into the state instance of Web EOC. So they have their local instance where they put the mission requests in. If we can't fill those missions locally, then at that point, it gets elevated to the state. But, you know, it's, the city of Bradenton is absolutely following the, the practices of other municipalities that have operations centers located within their jurisdiction. But because they are considered an EOC, they have a generator, they have all of those resources, so they should not run that risk of losing communication unless, you know, you see that catastrophic impact like the Panhandle saw in Michael where communications were knocked out.
Okay. Are there other counties that do allow their cities to put in mission requests with their, you know, I assume it's a web server that's got a web, you know, the EOC software installed on it. Just curious.
Yeah, so Manatee County hosts the local, the county instance of Web EOC. That's where the municipalities can put the missions into that platform and then the mission is assessed to see if that is something that we at the county can facilitate locally. And if it's a mission that is outside of our capabilities, at that point, the mission is then reworded to either amend it or update it and then that mission is then sent to the state by the county logistics chief in the state instance of Web EOC.
Okay, got it. No more questions? Thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you. Appreciate it. Mayor Short, tell us about all your efficiencies.
Well, it's a good question.
I didn't like the laugh.
So I took office in mid-November, so obviously six weeks or so after, after Milton. And we approached this, you know, our observations, we have had two or three, I think three now with my team. I call them post-mortems of the hurricane with the sheriff's office and others since the storms. Our lessons learned, what do we need to do better, what do we need to focus on? I wanted to start with, you know, what were our lessons learned? I think the biggest thing was the city learned it can't do everything itself. There was a vision, a view that we're going to do as much of this as we possibly can. And I think a very important lesson learned for our city was, we can't. We need help. We did not effectively use the EOC. We did not have somebody there. We were on the phone calls and asked for help, but we physically did not have someone there who could do just-in-time decisions and communicate those to the EOC. We did not effectively use mission statements, another lesson for us that we learned. I felt the communications from us to the county were not very, very good. I don't think we did a good enough job letting the county know what was going on. We had, there was what, two to three or four, I forget, there was a cadence of calls every day, pre, during and post-storm, but I don't believe our city did a good enough job letting the county know what was going on in the city of Anna Maria. Having said that, I think the communications between the three island cities was not great either. And, and there were several examples of that. I learned, because I came back, I was actually on vacation when Helene hit, that we were confused on who our real points of contact with the utilities were, that apparently some of the people we thought were our points of contact were no longer with FPL or whoever and Waste Management and others. And we had to scramble a little bit to confirm who it was we were supposed to be talking to. The city had not made investments in the right software to help us process things that came as a result of. came as a result of the storms, whether that was the software related to the properties, to processing the substantial damage reports. We didn't have it. So two other key lessons learned. First of all, I do want to call out the county and what they did to Bayfront Park post-storm. The work, the effort that they did, that Amy and her team did to get in there, get that park, I mean, we had, I don't know, 15, 20 huge Australian pines that had uprooted across that park, the vegetation, let alone the surge in the storm. And it was amazing how quickly they got in there, got that cleaned up and opened it up for back for business. It was well before, it was well before the end of March, which was, or was it February? February. And it was amazing how quickly they, and it was a mess. And I just wanted to call out the county and thank them again for the effort they did there. And then up here you see Center of AMI. For those of you who don't know, the center is 501(c)(3). It's actually in the City of Anna Maria. And they opened their doors the day after both storms hit. They, it served as the place to go, not only for the residents of the city, but for the residents of the island. There was food, there was clothing, there was cleaning supplies. They organized volunteers to go to people's houses to help them remove debris. And the center really, and I've told people this, reinvented itself as a result of these storms and the community effort that they did. And I, it was amazing to me. I was there a lot, talking to them, what do you need? They were asking us, what do we need? And, but the center just went above and beyond any, anything I could have imagined going into this in terms of what they did to support not just our city, but the island as a whole. So what are we doing on our lessons learned? We continue to do infrastructure improvements, stormwater swales, we had seawalls damaged, city seawalls. Our WASTOP valves, which are the valves that discharge the water into the canal systems, most of those were damaged, well, they were all damaged, a number of them destroyed. Infiltration, shoreline stabilization, those are all things that we are working on, continue to work on and refine as we prepare for the season. Jody mentioned, the EOC is coming to our commission meeting next week to do a presentation to our commission. They're also meeting with some of us prior to that meeting to talk about how we can better work together. And it's them telling us what we can and probably should be doing going forward and doing it better for the city to work with the EOC. We've been, as you know, Manatee County Sheriff's Office is our law enforcement. We have had several meetings with them about, you know, one of the, one of the challenges we had was the readmittance of people into our city because to get here, you got to go through another city. And so we've been working with the Sheriff's Office on a formal program to get people back into our city when we believe it is safe for them to get back. We're also investing in software. We've made some, we've made some decent investments on this and we're continuing to do that and we're in the process of getting that all ready to go, just in case it's needed going forward. And I hate to say this, but the city really didn't have agreements in place with contractors, formal agreements in place. Debris hauling, road clearing, monitoring, tree debris removal, so on and so forth. We are in motion right now, meeting, running RFPs, RFQs for this process to get all of that stuff in place so we know who to go, who to call, when they're going to be there, what they're going to provide us ahead of time, instead of calling people and asking if they got a couple of trucks and a bulldozer. So that's what we are doing to prepare. Questions?
I don't have any questions, but I'm glad to see you're focusing on what you did well versus what you could improve upon in anticipation of the upcoming storm season. I mean, these are going to become more and more common and we can always learn from mistakes and we'll learn from every storm and hope that we correct those mistakes for the next one and each one gets a little smoother. So I'm glad to see all of this. I'm glad to see you're, you're working with, with REOC. REOC is working with you so we can collaborate even better than, than we did last time. So thank you for that.
All right.
I don't think there's any other questions because everyone else here is with you. It's 10:25. We'll go on to three because you're up there.
Okay.
And then we'll take a short break so everyone can stand up and stretch their legs real quick.
Sure.
So why don't you go ahead with item number three about your operational efficiencies?
Yeah, so one of the things we were asked to talk about was operational efficiencies, cost savings, and collaboration. So just to sort of put a stake in the ground, the city has 14 full-time employees and four part-time employees. That is our staff. Last year, last fall, the commission approved a 20% reduction in our ad valorem rate. It went from 2.05 to 1.65. And that was approved. And just to put that reduction into dollars, had we, the city stayed at a 2.05 millage, it would have resulted in an additional $945,000 that would have come in through ad valorem for the 2024 year. But the commission and at the mayor's recommendation, we moved that down by 20%. And it was, it was a good decision. I mean, the city had done, you know, was to a point where we had made our investments. Of course, we didn't know the hurricanes were coming. But when you talk about efficiencies and cost savings, that was huge to our taxpayers. You know, a $945,000 reduction in their City of Anna Maria property taxes, 20% reduction in that rate. And trust me, it was well received. We do outsource. We take advantage of outsourcing. Law enforcement, the county sheriff, our building department is outsourced, floodplain management, our IT department is outsourced and legal. So we don't have any employees, you know, my 14 employees are not in any of those functions that, those are outsourced with third parties. We recently engaged a new IT provider. Our building department was rounded out. It was half us, half them. It's now all them. With respect to synergies and collaboration, we have had several meetings and I want to thank Stephanie and Michelle and their staff. They've met with us a few times to talk to them about working with them on grants and other opportunities with respect to what the city can be taking advantage of with respect to what the county is doing. And they're floating ideas to us as they come across them that they think might be helpful to our city. And of course, we're working with Carrie Knight with respect to the NRCS program in terms of opportunities with respect to stormwater and so on as that, as that program plays out. So we've been, we have had meetings, but we do appreciate and plan to continue to take advantage of your staff in terms of things that you do that we just don't have the staff, staff to do. So that's been in motion and will continue in motion. As far as the cities, the island cities go, there were discussions on consolidating law enforcement. It was sort of a one-way discussion. Our police department takes over your sheriff. There was no discussion about the sheriff going the other direction. There was talk of consolidating the building departments, but that doesn't save taxpayers any money by doing that. We talked about equipment sharing and maintenance opportunities where we might need some equipment from another city. They have it. Can we rent it from them? Those are on, discussions are ongoing. While it's not a cost savings, there is opportunities, we believe, for some ordinance alignments so it's not too confusing for people trying to figure out, am I in Bradenton Beach, Holmes Beach, or Anna Maria? And then there are potential opportunities with some of the more island-wide services. We use a different waste management company than the other two cities, for example. So there is possibilities there. Those, those items are, I won't say discussions are ongoing, but they have been, they get talked about. They unfortunately get lower on the pile of things to do and then they come back and forth. So those are some of the things with respect to efficiency savings and collaboration that we are working on.
All right. Not to use a dirty word, but, you know, once the OPAGA study came out, was anything gleaned from that? I mean, fortunately, it came back and basically said status quo is, is the best way of doing it, which I believe is the right decision. But it also implied that there were some efficiencies that, that could be had and not just efficiencies from cost, but efficiencies from quality of life. Like, for instance, going back to the last conversation, storms. Like, there's almost no reason why there's three different storm debris removal programs going on out on an island. It's inexplicable. Same thing with, with trash for that matter. Has that been, that seems to be the low-hanging fruit, getting together and having some sort of a inter-local board to, to vote on and determine some of these vendor contracts. Again, not even so much to save money, but just to create the efficiency of having one garbage truck on one day coming up and down the, the island or having one company, whomever it may be, have all the debris picked up so they have a place where, you know, one central location to, to put all the debris and one set of team out there and you're not bumping into each other. Is that?
That, those specific types of discussions have not been held. And I don't know if that's in part because of how FEMA looks at things with respect to city by city. I don't know all the logistics behind that, but it's certainly something that could be investigated.
I was saying, some of these aren't just cost savings, some of these are quality of life improvements and so.
Yeah. Okay.
Any other?
Any questions?
Questions? All right. Well, it is 10:32 and we typically take a short break after 90 minutes. We finished three out of eight, so we still have five more things with 90 minutes to go. So we'll take a short break for 10 minutes and then when we come back, we will get right into HUD, CBD, G-Guarantees, Utilities, TDC, Traffic, and Community Preservation. So take a 10-minute break till 10:43.
... Seventy percent of funds expended for low to moderate income persons, meeting the urgent needs is another major one criteria. And of course, both of those will be able to be done very easily through the CDBGDR funding. And that we basically wanted to make sure that we had public input for all of this because this is for the whole county. The other thing to know is that with the mitigation funding, that we are required to do at least 15% toward mitigation. In the end, we could do up to 100% for mitigation. So we are currently, we are past the unmet needs and partnership consultation meetings. And we have the draft action plan already into the 30 day public comment period, which ends on Friday. And then we will be submitting to HUD. Just note that one of the things, reasons why we bring this up is everybody asks, when are we going to be able to start using the funds? And after this, we have to also include the policies and procedures and give those to HUD. Those are ones we've never had before because they are CDBGDR related. So we had to write those. Or they, we plan to bring those to the board on July 29th so that they can be submitted to HUD by August 4th, which is our deadline. After that, we will have 45 days to be able to get that back from HUD. And then what, with that approval comes the actual agreement that once signed by both the county and HUD will be able to be implemented. So the four different pockets that we have of potential funding are housing, infrastructure, economic revitalization and public services. Reason I don't count mitigation in that is because mitigation can really go in any of those four pockets. So it kind of crosses each of those areas. Common uses are for repair and rehabilitation of homes and buildings and then also for water, storm water mitigation and other things that can help us to keep from our areas from flooding. And the one big thing to know is that for any infrastructure, Davis Bacon and By America Built America are required. And so currently, we are at the very tail end of the public participation plan, going to be submitting to HUD by our deadline of June 30th. And as you know, we, as you guys have talked about, we did talk to you about the different unmet needs to make sure that we were really looking at what was going to help Anna Maria. In the end, for all county, we have 1.41 million on, or 1.041 billion, I'm so sorry, on here. We ended up actually getting more, we're more at 1.6 billion at this point. We do have and wanted to show that we do have your projects that you guys have put into CDBGDR, which kind of goes along with what you had been talking about before. And then your role was basically being able to help get us the information we needed and we appreciated that. You guys got that to us quite quickly. So thank you. And the one major thing to remember on all of this is it does have to have a tieback to a storm, which obviously your project does. And that we will, once we get the funding, we will work with each of the municipalities to be able to then look at the projects that you are needing in your area. We'll get more information and especially after hearing what you guys talked about with the pier in the first, I think it was, yeah, the first presentation, that basically to see where you are at that point, to see what your unmet needs are still at that point, to take out the pieces that maybe were funded by FEMA or anything else. And then that way we know where your unmet need is for that project. And that is it. Are there any questions?
Would the hardening of our city hall be eligible for these funds?
Yes, the, okay, for some reason that didn't sound like it was coming through. Yes, those would be eligible for use of the funds.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I don't have any questions. I've talked to you about this ad nauseam. So I'm good.
Present for this, from this point.
I probably, I probably could. Okay. And so we are having a special meeting just for everyone to, on Friday morning, just to finalize the 30 day process of after the public comment and that's just going to get submitted and that's going to start the timeline that Michelle presented. So hopefully, well, early 2026, we'll start having the funding available to actually be able to utilize and do things.
Correct. And if you have looked at the action plan, you'll notice that that is really just the funding for the different buckets. It is not actually stating any projects. And that's because we won't start looking at the projects for an eligibility standpoint until we get the grant agreement executed. And so we are talking about, probably about January.
And just a reminder to everyone listening, that the eligibility isn't just, does it qualify? We also have income limits and and other dynamics associated with these. And we have to, this is a quarter of a billion dollars. We can't screw this up. So sometimes somebody may deem a project more of a priority than than something that's slightly below it, but that's slightly below it may hit certain thresholds of qualification that's going to accelerate that into a higher tier for that reason. Yes. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Michelle. All right. Moving on to Pat Shea. Is that here? Oh, you're back there. All right. I feel like I just had this conversation during the break.
All right, now it's on. All right. I'm Pat Shea, Utilities Director here for Manatee County. Just a couple of brief items. First, first one on the agenda is the water and sewer, water and wastewater franchise agreements. They are scheduled to expire in 2026, the end of 2026. And looking back in in the records I could find very quickly, it looks like a lot of these agreements really started in the, in the late 60s, mid to late 60s. I think the wastewater agreement was in 71. And they've been updated for periods of 15 years at a time. So the, the current agreement actually was expired a little bit before it got renewed. So my goal is to not let this agreement expire and move forward. I've spoken with the clerk about setting up a process for both parties to review the agreements and look for improvements or or changes to those agreements and kind of moving forward. A lot of this is with the assumption that City of Anna Maria is not planning on building a water system or a wastewater system between now and 2026. Never know. A couple other quick items, master lift station number five, which is the one pump station on the island that conveys wastewater off the island into Manatee County, is, we're in, we're in Michelle's world, looking for some grants to harden that facility. And so the county will be asking for maybe letters of support for that project. It's one of those, it's not a necessity, but it certainly can't hurt. So that is right at Manatee Beach. There's a kind of a structure that's fenced off. That's, that's, when you flush, that's where it all goes. A couple other things, the water mains that pass from the mainland over to the islands, Cortez, that water main on Cortez Avenue is slated to be done. Hopefully by the end of the year, you can see work is ongoing and that's probably slowed traffic a little bit from time to time. And then the Manatee Avenue water main, which failed in June of 2023, I believe, that's slated for replacement before the bridge in 2026. So optimistically, but very realistically, that will be done by the end of 2026. And with that, I will turn it over if there's any questions for me.
Have we started the process with these franchises? I mean, they're, they're not really optional. Presuming you guys own the water, correct? I mean, I mean, it's, I mean, I don't think there's any real reason to delay that.
Yeah. Chairman Cruz, very simple, they're relatively simple agreements. They're six and seven pages respectively, including the signature pages on those. There was some work that was done with the City of Bradenton Beach in 2019, which might kind of serve as the template moving forward because that was, I think it went through legal review and and was held up for some other reasons. So there's a, a later addition that kind of matches, but I will, I will add that the other two cities on the island are also on the same schedule. So ideally, the, the agreements will match up and kind of serve as a, as a master agreement between all the parties.
All right. Any other questions about water, wastewater, lift stations, utilities?
I just want to thank you. That's right. Pat, just want to thank you, Charlie and staff for, for moving that air, that water line further along. I've been banging that drum for a while. So just glad to hear about the 2026 date. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Thank you very much, Pat.
All right. Thank you.
And number six, Mayor, you said you're good on that? That was predominantly, if not entirely, based on the pier?
Yeah, I'm, I'm good with item six.
Is there any other comments? For anyone on item six? No? All right. And just for anyone listening who doesn't know what I'm six, that's Terrace Development Council. That was predominantly, or I guess entirely, about funding the replacement of the pier, which we discussed as part of item one with the ferries. So we will move on then to item number seven, which is managing traffic and parking, everyone's favorite topic.
Now, good morning. On behalf of the county, Clark Davis, Deputy Director of Public Works, oversee the traffic management section and was added to this. But my co presenter is the mayor and I believe he wants to cover some of the issues that the city's been looking at related to parking. But I'm here to answer questions if I need to.
Okay. Well, one of the things that was part of our overall agenda was, the request was to talk about managing traffic. And as you all know, the City of Anna Maria is at the very north end of the island. And to be perfectly honest with you, while we do have traffic challenges, traffic's not our biggest challenge. The, the traffic issues on the island, again, I'm not telling you anything you don't know, are getting across the Manatee Bridge and getting dispersed through Holmes Beach, as well as the Cortez Bridge and Bradenton Beach and the Longboat Key Bridge. And that's, that's, that's where in my opinion, from an island perspective, that's where the major traffic challenges are. By the time traffic gets to the north end of the island, it has dissipated a fair amount. But that's not to say we don't have traffic. It's just not anything like what you see on the rest, you know, south of us on the island. Having said that, our challenge is parking, you know? And I just want to highlight what we have experienced over the last several months, a significant increase in daily visitors. Probably due in part because a lot of the vacation properties are still not up and running. Probably part of it due in part to the fact of what they charge to rent those properties and more people that are coming, we believe are actually staying off island and then coming onto the island, whereas maybe in the past, they would have been staying on island. So what's happening is our right of ways in the City of Anna Maria, and to be clear, we do not charge for parking. We do not have permit only parking. We do have some limitations on our narrower streets where you can only park on one side of the street or not, and not the other. But we're basically open parking and free parking throughout the entire city. And everybody knows it. So our challenge is how quickly our right of ways get filled up in the city and the concerns around safety as well as, you know, not only for the traffic, for the people and the vehicles, but also for our pedestrians, bicyclists. Because an inordinate amount of people come to our city to park, it creates some challenges for us. We have, as I, as you know, as I said, the sheriff is our law enforcement. We're paying overtime for them to be there on the weekends and especially on holidays. on the weekends, especially on holidays, but we haven't, the last three weeks, two, two weekends have not been, have been a non-holiday weekend, and it's been extremely busy. Our code enforcement and public works people are coming in on the weekends to deal with things. We have, we've had waste management coming in to address things on Saturdays to the extent they will and can. And, and a lot of this is because, as I mentioned, we don't do permit-only parking, and, and so everyone knows there's a gap, but once you get to the City of Anna Maria, if you can find a spot, you're free to park. So what have we done to address this? As we have been repairing and remediating from the storms, we have taken advantage of that to create more parking. So we had to redo the City Hall parking lot. We created new parking spots, as well as the Island Players Facility beside us. At the city pier, when we redid all of that, we set it up in a way and put in parking differently than it was to create more parking spots. At Bayfront Park, we have talked to the county. We, as I mentioned, the county came in and got it all up and running. I believe there's an opportunity to expand the parking area there that could accommodate a significant num, more number of vehicles to park at that park. We have had some initial conversations with One Church about possibly taking advantage of their open space to use it for additional parking. As a minor thing, and this is how finally we're looking at this, it was mentioned earlier about the pavers going in on Pine Avenue. So we have sidewalks all the way up and down Pine Avenue instead of breaks where it's sand and rock and whatever, and we're working on that, but the next phase got delayed because we rerouted part of that to save five parking spots on Pine Avenue. But that's how critical parking is in our city, that it was worth waiting that extra couple of weeks to get that re-engineered and redesigned, so we could save five parking spots on Pine Avenue. We believe there's some opportunities, if we look at our traffic flow, and to make some changes there that can help with this. And I personally believe that if we, and this is not a process, an item I can make the decision on, it would be my commission with input from our constituents, that if we rerouted the trolley down Magnolia, where the center is, we would not need that turnaround that the trolley currently uses at the pier, and by not having that need, that creates right at the pier, another 10 to 12 parking spots. So again, I know these numbers sound small to all of you, but they're very big to us. And so even something as simple as reroute of the trolley so they don't have to pull in and do their loop and come out, creates more parking for us to take advantage. And that's what we're focused on. We're trying to identify where we can help address our parking challenges. What I don't want to do, and that's what, it says considerations. Personally, what I really don't want to do is head down a path of should we be considering permit-only parking? Should we consider pay-to-park for non-residents? Should we reduce parking on streets that we just believe are totally out of control? You know, we don't want to do that, but we got to figure out how to make this all work, you know, with respect to the overflow we are dealing with, and I don't want to go down this path. I don't think my commission, I have not spoken to them about this, so I don't know, but I, I, you know, we're trying to deal with the situation as current state presents itself, but we just got to, you know, get to a point that's satisfactory both to our constituents and the people that are there for the week or whatever, or the day, but it's got to work, you know, work to everyone's satisfaction. I believe that other, we want, I wanted to show you. It's, I think it's this one, the tourist development. Just skip by to the pictures. So on Memorial Day, okay, argue it's a holiday, but this is not unusual. This was, these pictures were taken between 1:00 and 2:00 o'clock on Memorial Day. These are city streets. This is actually part of Bayfront Park, but you can see it was full and people are pulling up on the side. You can't see there's double parking going on, but these are three of our streets. Go to the next slide. Three more of our streets in terms of what's going on with the right-of-way parking in our city. I believe there's one more. Three more streets. So this is what happens to the City of Anna Maria. This, yes, it was Memorial Day, but I can guarantee you, if you go out there on Saturday or Sunday of this weekend, you'll see similar, similar things. A byproduct of all this, next one, is this is what happens. Even though waste management does come in on Saturday and pick up trash in the morning, this was Sunday, so within 24 or so hours, that's what had happened in that quick of a time with all those vehicles. This is what our beach looked like, okay? And I know the pictures don't do it justice, but I told somebody, I said, I swear you could have walked from tent to tent to tent and never touched the ground on, on the beaches from, you know, as a result of all the parking you just saw. To contrast, please, next, this is what permit-only street parking looked like, again, between 1:00 and 2:00 o'clock on Memorial Day. Keep going. Same. That's what the beach looked like at permit-only parking areas, okay? So. You know, we, we, we experienced this. I'm not going to, everything pretty much on this slide I've talked about. This isn't about what other cities do. This is about our city, and, and maybe if you go to, let's see, I guess that's in your presentation, isn't it? Okay, so we'll hold, but at the end of the day, we want to, we want to, you know, we would like to see things stay as status quo as they can, but we do have to figure out a solution in terms of how we deal with what you just saw pictures of. And yes, as I said, that was Memorial Day, but drive out there, if the weather's nice on Saturday or Sunday, drive out there, and you'll see things very similar to the, to the pictures there. So one of the things, I know I'm asking for a lot today, but we would like to talk to the county about, is there things that you could help us with, or ideas you might have with respect to us addressing our parking challenges that we do have in the City of Anna Maria?
Have you presented, I mean, it seems like, let's, let's remember, you're working within a finite amount of space.
We are.
So there's only two ways you could do. You can widen it out, which you run into water, or you can go up, which nobody wants to have that discussion again. Otherwise, I mean, I know I don't live there, but I, the pictures look like you're doing an amazing job with parking. I would probably, the way you're utilizing the right of ways and having them separate from the, both the roadway and the grass areas and allowing for the parking, I'm, I'm honestly impressed with how well you're utilizing the space you have to provide as much parking as you can. Obviously, there's a talk about rerouting a trolley. I don't think that's that big of a deal if it's creating parking spaces for, I guess the question is, so that would be in place of going past Pine? I mean, is that going to affect when people, will we get a ferry back out there?
Because the trolley currently goes, goes Pine from beach to bay, turns around in a part, in an area there right beside the pier, and then goes right back up Pine. If, by rerouting it down Magnolia, which incidentally provides for a stop at the center.
Are you saying go like up Pine and then over and then back down?
No, no, the other way.
But nonetheless, it's still, it's still passing the pier where people are here?
Oh, yeah, 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 no, not bypassing the pier. It just.
It's not Magnolia, instead of Pine, it's doing a longer loop instead of a turn.
And it keeps them out of that parking lot, which, again, like I said, 10, 12 spots doesn't sound like a lot, but it's, but the critical thing with that one is, it's at the pier, okay? It's right there beside the pier. So, and I know, again, five here, 12 there, whatever, you know, when we're, when we got that, but I think, and part of this is, the bottom line is, we get all of that, and, and yes, you know, you see, and, and we currently allow that to happen, but it does strain us, as I said. We have to have extra sheriff's deputies on duty on the weekends. We got to bring in our public works people who, we have one guy there on the weekend, but sometimes we got to call our second or third one in. Waste management, we had to call them to come, send a crews out to do unscheduled runs to pick up some of the trash. So we are incurring incremental costs to allow, you know, to let this happen.
Sure, but that, that then begs the question. I know this is an unpopular opinion from people who believe that beach access is a fundamental right, but I'm looking at your summary here. Dumpsters reaching capacity by midday, unscheduled pickups, beach attendants extremely dense, beast attendants posing safety and sanitary risk. Your conversation about overtime, that's based on your current parking. My question to you would be, how much more parking could you create? Let's say we could, in theory, create 1,000 more parking. Do you want to create? Do you have the capacity to create 1,000 more? Because you don't have the capacity to hold the people that drive those cars there, even if you could find the parking. It almost feels like, from this summary, you have too much parking. It almost feels like you've already overextended the, the physical capacities of City of Anna Maria, both in terms of waiting three hours for a table at a restaurant, to trying to find space on sand for the beach, to finding a place to put your garbage in a dumpster. It almost feels like you've created too much capacity that's extending your ability to safely and comfortably provide for the people already parking in your area. How much more parking do you want?
Well, you said what I probably should have said is, I think we are at capacity with respect to parking. And, and that's, you know, and, and again, these, my commissioners have not seen this, right, in terms of, but I'm trying to figure out if there's a solution to deal with what we have, or do we need to consider permit-only parking? Do we need to reduce the availability of parking? The challenge is, you know, people come up on the island and they either go left, once, once the public beach is full, they go left or right. I will tell you, most of them go right, go north. And, but I, I, I don't know, I don't know what the, and I, I know my commissioners probably have a point of view on this, but can we, do I want to increase the capacity of parking in our city by that? Absolutely not. We can't do that. We're constrained as it is. We are constrained as it is.
You know, when they turn right, you know, they're going through an area of the island that has permit-only parking. That's what those slides represented, that. Those streets are wide open, right? So, you know, part of the safety issue with creating additional parking where it's safe to do it is, you know, like, let's reduce the amount of parking that's happening in these right of ways. There aren't sidewalks there. There's kids biking, people walking three across, they're in the middle of the road. You know, the more densely that area gets packed in, the harder it is to kind of manage a safe environment for kids coming off and on, on the beach. So I think what the mayor is saying is, you know, we're at capacity in these sort of danger zones, right? There may be an opportunity for us, we may have to consider, what do we have to do to get it under control? And part of this goes back to, you know, kind of communicating and being a little more involved with our partners on the island who run other municipalities, and part of it is, you know, kind of being fair to the people who come to visit our part of the island and the residents who live there, if we're going to continue to get this kind of disproportionate impact, not just on holiday weekends. I mean, it's happening, you know, every weekend.
Mr. Murrah, commenting the question, one of the reasons I like the rerouting down Magnolia is because it is going to take it right past the center, which I think will increase utilization of the center. But my question is, once you hit South Bay, and it would make the left, you know, presumably to go past the city pier, if we eliminate the turnaround there, where, what area would you anticipate using for discharge and loading of passengers?
On Pine, right there by City Pier Park. They make the left on Pine. They stop right there because we have that gap. So on the, on the.
Okay, so we would utilize that area on Pine, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
That I just talked to our transit, man. It's your, it's your municipality, so we should defer to you about where you best want our transit to go through your municipality within the realms of what's safe and allowable. So I would just, Charlie, have transit speak to them about potentially rerouting it. That's easy enough, presumably. I don't know why you want the more parking spaces, but it's, it also does make sense to go past the center because people sometimes put their kids on there, and there's younger people, and they go to center, or they, they're going to see a concert or a show. It's like, why have them all trucking through neighborhoods? Because that's where you start getting garbage in people's front yards, because they're getting off the, the trolley over on Pine, and then they're walking and they're throwing their cup in somebody's yard or wherever. I mean, why even bother? I might as well have that trolley going in front of the center anyway, even if you don't need parking. I think that just makes a better rerouting option.
And, you know, I, we presented this because we believe we've been a good citizen here in terms of allowing all of this parking, the people that come to the island that are searching all over the place for parking, that, that, you know, we like to think we've been a good citizen in terms of, if you can find a place to park, park. The point is that we are getting strained now, and whether, and you're right, we don't want or need another 1,000 parking spots, and we're refining a little bit here and a little bit there that we think makes sense, but there may come a point where we have to look at something a little more drastic with respect to the parking situation in our city.
Okay, and I've got Commissioners to the, I think your hands up?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll, like, I'll like some of the comments. I'll defer to the city on the appropriate route, just keeping in mind Magnolia is also significantly residential, and that's, but I don't know the exact breakdown of how many folks are full-time residents, how many of those properties were vacation rentals, so I'll, again, I'll defer to the city on that. I think the center makes for a great stop. I mean, it's self-explanatory there, because you currently turn, let's see, going up Gulf, and then you turn right onto Pine, so I suppose you just route that to Magnolia, turn onto South Bay, and then route, turn left onto Pine. I think that makes sense, and I've never really been a big fan of that turnaround. I haven't been on the trolley there myself. You're, you have a lot of, you have a fair amount of pedestrian traffic. You have the traffic going north or south on the North Bay, on North Bay Boulevard, and then you're trying to negotiate a trolley in there. Now granted, it's a right turn instead of a left, but I think, if you need the parking, I'm not going to haggle over it. I think 12 spots, I feel like you should be able to get more, but I guess we'll see what the engineers say. So I'd certainly support that. I think when you have markets, when you have other events, when you're leveraging the City Pier Park, the pavilion there for markets, which I go to, that tends to close off some of the spaces on North Bay Boulevard for vendors on the, call it the south side of that road. So you do tend to lose some parking due to that, but I think with the additional parking up north where the turnaround is, hopefully you'll be able to get some more people to park and show up. So yeah, I'll just defer to staff to figure out the appropriate route direction. Thinking, thinking long-term beyond the pier is increasing the number of trolleys and/or service, the trolley service, but I think that's going to have to be a broader conversation on the financing piece, but the more, the more, the more frequency you add, the more, the more, but the increase in frequency, you'll, you'll see a lot more ridership, no doubt. I think that's a conversation worth having in the future is, is our transit routed capacity? This is an important question to think about. That's all I have.
All right, thank you. Any other?
Just two quick ones.
Hey, go ahead.
Al, it's Brian Parnell and myself to schedule a meeting with you and Kevin Hoyt. We'll go out there with Transit, and we'll evaluate that. The second issue with Bayfront Park, just want to remind you, it's your park, you own it, but we'll be more than happy to work with you. We have a product called True Grid. It's a ADA compliant, plastic honeycomb system that we deploy, and we can expand that parking lot. So I'll bring Carmine, Brian, myself, meet with you on site. We could evaluate that.
And we did have a preliminary discussion, but at the time, they were getting it back, recovering from the storms, and we all agreed to punt on that until. and we all agreed to punt on that until we had more time to focus.
But Brian, go ahead and schedule a meeting with Leslie, and we'll get out there.
All right. There are no more questions on this? Clark, did you have something to, to add to this, or was that pretty much the extent of that conversation? Don't, don't feel obligated. Okay. We'll move on to, item number eight, the final item, community preservation, which is also the mayor, as well as Charlie, Hunsayer. I have no idea what this topic is.
Well, actually, our, our city clerk.
Oh, that's right, you, you were promised to be a presenter in this last item, so.
It's green, so it's on, right? Hi, good morning. I'm Amber LaRoe. I'm the city clerk for the City of Anna Maria, and I am also a third-generation Manatee County native. So it is an honor to be here and participate in this collaborative conversation with the county. We, my first item to talk about is historic preservation, and you can't talk about the city's history without thinking about the city's pier. It is where families and generations have gone to make memories, myself included, and I'm sure each of you. I do have a funny story. I took my son fishing off of that pier. He was 10 years old, and he'd been fishing many times before, and he's out there casting, reeling, casting, reeling, and he casts this final time and hooks a pelican. So that was fun to reel that in. My husband's reeling that in. It's sunset, it's summer, so you can imagine now the pier traffic has stopped, and it has stopped behind us because everybody is spectating on the saving of this pelican. And it is fine, it was saved, and we got the hook out. But, you know, that's part of my story, and it's part of my son's story, so we can always think about the pier now in our lives, and we still tease him about that seven years later. So, you know, focusing on restoring of the pier is major to our city, and I appreciate the conversations that we've had today, so I won't belabor it, but we continue and look forward to the county's support in fixing that pier. Environmental conservation, preservation means protecting what makes our island so beautiful and resilient. The city did receive a resiliency grant, we're using that to prepare a vulnerability assessment and stormwater plan. This will help us prepare for the changing tides and the heavier storms. We've also worked hard to protect our infrastructure, and we're, we received a hardening grant to help us with that. And we're starting with our city hall. We've issued an RFP, and bid openings are in July, so we'll be able to set that off soon. We ask for the county to be a partner in expanding our conservation efforts. I would ask to maybe meet with Charlie and his team to help us collaborate on shoreline efforts, flood barriers, and future grant opportunities in that space. Sustainable development, through an FDOT partnership, we're improving walkability and safety along Pine Avenue. We're also looking at a part, a parking study, a parking assessment possibly in the future, not only to add parking, but to make it more efficient, and to include more bike and pedestrian safety in that design. We're also exploring solar-powered lighting, possible EV charging stations, and more renewable energy sources on our public buildings. Balancing tourism and livability with our, for our residents. We love welcoming visitors, and I hope that's never been in question. You saw the, what the weekends looked like on Memorial Day. It was a heavy impact and a heavy lift for our staff, but we did it. Nearly every residential street was packed, and we worked hard with overtime from our code enforcement and our sheriffs. We ask to work with the county on tourism impact funding, something maybe with cost sharing or seasonal support that would help us with infrastructure demands during those peak times. Beyond that, I would love to see some policy collaboration on the day visitor volumes, and the support from the county for infrastructure improvements like roads, signage, and safer pedestrian routes. So in closing, Anna Maria will always show up and will always do our part. Tourism lifts the whole county, but the impact lands hard with our city. We're not asking for a handout, we're asking for a handshake, a real partnership based on fairness, sustainability, and a shared responsibility. I believe that we can work together to protect what makes the Man, makes Manatee County so unique. Thank you. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to help.
I have a question, just, uh, because we were talking about traffic, we're talking about parking. But the thing I always focus on, and it's, it hasn't been discussed here, you, you talk about enhanced bike, bicycle infrastructure. I know Holmes Beach, last year, I think it was, was trying to get TDC funds for buffer-protected bike lanes and effectively a trail within Holmes Beach, the discussion with Mayor, when Mayor Brown was on TDC, or still is. But he brought up, hey, why isn't this a island-wide proposal that can then connect to our mainland, to the east, and connect to, on Bokey, to the south? What is your definition of enhanced bicycle, because I, I see when I'm up at City of Anna Maria, I see that the golf carts and the rental golf carts driving all over, but you don't see as much bikes. What you do, the, the cruiser bikes, they're either on sidewalks or people are trying to walk, or they're just out in the middle of traffic that's further exacerbating your traffic problems. Where's your contemplation within the, the limited space you have, obviously, to be able to build meaningful bicycle infrastructure? Because I could certainly help with traffic.
Yes, so I come from the city of St. Pete Beach in Pinellas County. I worked there for about five years. And so what I would love to see is something like the Pinellas Trail, like you just stated, connecting, obviously, we have a narrow.
Penny for Pinellas?
We haven't, yeah, penny, can we get penny for Pinellas? Yeah. Penny for Manatee County? So it would be awesome to, to develop something much like that. However, you're right, it is limited in the city of Anna Maria. So I think part of that goes with speaking to the experts, so we can do our parking assessment, and incorporate those designs for safety. I know St. Pete Beach did one on, it was a pedestrian, a multimodal project, and they had some really good contacts, and so I would look forward to reaching out to them to tap into their brain. It's beyond my capacity.
Where do you stand in terms of discuss, because, I mean, a lot of these are, are great, because I got, I'm big on quality life. So roadside, and roads, roadside enhancements, and bicycle infrastructure, better crosswalks, more pedestrian. I, I'm a huge fan of this top quadrant right here. Where do you stand in terms of design and thought process on there? Or where do you ultimately see the funding associated with that?
So I would love to collaborate on grants, and I know that there are a lot of availables out there for us. I know St. Pete Beach, like, I hate referring back to them, but they did get some grants towards their project, and it was like two years ago. So that was one spot. I've only been with this city since the end of March, and that is one of the things that I did bring up to the mayor quite early on, because it is something that, you know, St. Pete Beach worked really hard on in my time there. So I did reach out to a couple of vendors and got some scope of works that I've, you know, sat down with the mayor and worked on. It's definitely something we would have to do in a phase, because it is not in a light funding situation.
Sure, and you, you all actively work with our state delegation and our federal delegation, right? I mean, there, there was a funding source associated with the pier, so I'm assuming Representative Robinson, or Senator Boyd, or somebody ran that appropriation. Okay. Okay, yeah, but let's definitely talk about that. That's, that's one of my core focuses, so.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions for your clerk? Oh, Commissioner Sadiq, your hand's up.
Thank you. I quite liked many of those ideas, so we have a few living shoreline projects. I did, I was just scanning through the CIP and did not see anything on the north end, but we also wouldn't see the city CIP projects if, if there are any of those on our website. So that's something you can perhaps brainstorm about. I'm a big fan, it helps to provide a bit more of a natural solution to erosion along our coastlines. We have one via borders by you. I think there's, it's another one in Port of Sueno Park, Palmasola. And of course, with Beecher Nursery, we're looking at quite a, not, not significantly in Anna Maria, but we're looking at quite a few solutions to stabilize shorelines around Kokeena in particular. But always open to, you know, just planting a seed there if there are any interesting concepts, or if there's any interest in projects like that. I know you did a planting back in January to help. That, that was more of a private effort in partnership with the city, but to help with the loss of the sand, sand dunes in the north end. But throwing an idea out there, that might be something the, the city of Anna Maria might want to consider, is we've been, using leveraging grant funds to, to fund those efforts, and they're fairly inexpensive. Well, relative to other projects, the county puts out fairly inexpensive, if that's of interest. As far as the trail, the Barrier Island Traffic Study did not have a dollar amount associated with it, but it indicated at the time of completion, what, five years ago now? That there was some kind of a trail project, well, it recommended, not a project, but it recommended the development of a trail throughout the island, but I, I haven't really seen a whole. I'm sure there's been some movement, but I'd be curious to see what the city, your city's thoughts would be on where that would be, what that would look like. I'm working to get the Sun Trail, the Manatee County portion on the west, through S. Bradenton funded. Eventually, it'd be nice to connect that to the island somehow, through both Cortez and Manatee Avenue. But I'll follow, I'll follow along with Chairman Cruz's thoughts. If, where are you guys thinking that would be? If you haven't seen the Sun Trail, the shared-use non-motorized network trail, it, I suspect, looking, looking at the map for City of Anna Maria, you might find similar constraints, and probably a good model to follow, because the Sun Trail actually cuts through a lot of residential neighborhoods in Bradenton, doesn't go along a major state road like Manatee or Cortez, runs parallel to them, so. Just throwing out there, if you've thought about any alignments alone, just curious.
Well, I, I can say that we do have a map, I don't know when it was done, of a vision of what that, exactly that would look like going through the city of Anna Maria and up around Beam Point, and coming back down eventually to Pine or to Golf Drive. We do have that. It's in city hall. In fact, it's up on a wall somewhere in our back, in the back area. And that was, as I understood, that was the vision that was put together, and it may have been five years ago, Commissioner, that you said that something had been taken a look at. You know, we also attempted to get funding to extend our safety path along Golf Drive, further down Golf, closer to Magnolia. That funding was line item vetoed last year, so it got put back in the pile. And of course, everything that we're talking about here is part of a vision that was thought of several years ago that's still sitting there. And, and as we said, it's something longer term that we do view as being very important. But it also does play into what we just talked about, because if you put in that, does that mean we're going to be taking away more? The byproduct could be less parking, right? Or is it one-way streets? I don't know. So that's part of the study and so on that our clerk referenced that we're looking into.
Okay. And that, that's a fair point, too. The, the interesting thing will be, what, what does that look like throughout the island? Because you have lower speed limits, in theory, people aren't racing that much. But you also don't necessarily see the same volume, all at once, at least, of traffic as you went on Manatee Avenue as, you know, compared to North or South Bay Boulevard. We are working on a, we do, I think at the, one of our budget process meetings, we, last week, we did discuss, and at some point, there will be a workshop come this fall on trails, because, speaking to my staff, there, there needs to be a common design language for, for what trails look like in, in urban parts of our county. It's a little bit easier to conceptualize and put them together. We have significant, made significant progress with Gateway-Greenway, Gateway-Greenway Trails, for example. It's very easy to put, well, not easy, but it's much easier to put trails out east. But I think the challenge is, how do you reconcile intersections, crosswalks, traffic, you know, shared traffic along major corridors? What, what does the signage look like? Do we have signals just for, for bikes? There, there are a lot of questions that I think we'll, we'll work to answer. I think we're bringing in quite a few people, hopefully from DOT, MPO, certainly our staff, and I'd certainly invite you to, to that and bring your input to what, what are the constraints that you see in the city of Anna Maria, the island, and how you think we can operate and work within those constraints? So that is a workshop that we are going to have this fall, so please check that out.
All right. Thank you. Any other questions, comments? No?
Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much. Excellent presentation. Is, is there more? Your name's on here. Just be cognizant of the time. That's why I'm saying be cognizant of the time.
Thank you. Yes, sir, I will be. I, I want to do, thanks to the City of Anna Maria for your beach response during, during that emergency. I'm going to tell you that Dean Jones was always available on the hour, every hour, for answering questions. You had a tremendous effort to move sand off the coastal beaches, areas, people's yards, people wanting, asking questions. We were happy to be able to have that opportunity to provide you a place to place it, and not say, take it to the landfill, like many communities along this, other counties did. And because of that, as we mentioned, we have a good plan now to handle this again. You know, beaches were in place to protect Anna Maria artificially this way since 1992. And I'm trying to recall in my own mind how many hurricanes we've experienced since then. Let's just say it starts with 10. And, and in those 10 hurricanes, we have never had a hurricane like Hurricane Helene that removed effectively the sand dunes of Anna Maria Island and put them into residential homes. That's what happened. I mean, our beaches did erode, they deflated, they lost depth. But a large portion of that sand that came across the roads and into the yards was the 30, 40, 50 years of dune formation that we had on that island before being washed, picked up, and pushed bulldozed into the island. If we get a storm next year, or this year, I predict we're not going to have the kind of sand in the yards that we had before, because why? The dunes aren't there. And so we will have beach erosion for sure. But hopefully, we won't have those kinds of impacts, and, and it's a kind of a sad story, because dunes, as you know, provide short-storm protection, keeping waves and water out of your yards, out of your pools, not to mention the habitat value, the turtles that rely on dunes to shade and block the light. We're going to have an interesting turtle season this year relative to movement of turtles that are normally used to having a wall of sand to turn around and go back. They're not there anymore. And a couple of turtles have ended up in people's pools this year. Been really interesting. But I did want to thank you for that, and, and appreciate also your remarks about Bayfront Park. I'll pass that along to Amy Johnson, and Dave Schumer, Carmine D'Emilio. Like, like you said, a lot of communities were still opening, trying to open their parks last month from impacts. And the work of property management department, beach management crews, was unbelievable, taking an effort there. And, and we thank you for your comments, because, you know, Bayfront Park is just like any other recreational location on the island. So few, it was important to have it reopened very quickly. I want to thank you for that. I wanted to talk a little bit about the fact that, from a committee standpoint, a committee preservation, the beaches do provide a very important part of that, and the, you know, Commissioner Cruz, you've seen this before, but I want to make sure this information goes out to the information for Anna Maria Island. And, and let me say a moment that, 1992, this was our beach. 30% of our island was, had a sandy beach. 70% of the island, you could not walk at high tide. So people look at our healthy beaches now by making bank investments to sand over time, and wondering, well, why all this attention? Why can't we let it go a couple of years? It's a very expensive proposition. Every time it happens, it's about a $25 million job. And if we do, the forces of erosion are very consistent and very constant, always there. I want to point out this non-federal portion right through here, that, that was added in 2004 as a result of petitioning the state of Florida to enroll this part of the beach under the Beecher Nursery program with the state of Florida. The Army Corps of Engineers and the federal government participate through a congressional authorization, a very laborious process, for this beach from Holmes Beach sea limits to here. But this section was added due to the severe erosion in the early 2000s that was occurring here. I might add that North Shore Drive, this location, we've also understood that this is a cyclical erosional pattern that about every 20, 25 years, Mr. Rossi reminded me of that in 1992, when we were walking up and down that beach, that these currents pass, and these, the sand is laid along this beach like this. But when this, it's short-circuited by things going on out here, this beach, right through here along North Shore Drive, disappears in a matter of six months to a year, and some of the residents along here become very alarmed when the shore waves are breaking up against their homes. So I wanted to encourage you to re- you to remember, as we talk about parking, that in the 90s, we, when we first laid out this program for the entire island, we reached an agreement with the city of Anna Maria in writing to maintain a minimum number of parking spaces along this beachfront accessible within a quarter mile back of any access point, to maintain our county's financial eligibility with the state to pay for, up to, for the state's purposes, up to 50% of the work here. So as you consider, as you consider managing the parking as you must, please remember, we can make a review of that agreement that we have with you. It's street by street, space by space, to preserve a minimum number. Holmes Beach was very careful to meet that requirement, but with their permit parking, certainly, as I remember discussions with your former mayor, Murphy, you had collateral damage. Everybody moved up to Anna Maria. People are paying $20 to $50 a day to park along-
That was beach re-nourishment comment, Charlie.
Yep. Just wanted to tell you that. Parking is important, and please remember those requirements with us when we go forward with that. This, you've all, you've all heard this history, and I'll go very quickly through it. It's focused mainly on the south end, but our re-nourishment program continues to make that possible through a tourist program. We have particular issues around tidal flows along Boat, along Boat Pass area, and the influences there are going to require us to have particular structural measures in the near future to protect the erosion forces against Coquina Beach. And the pier structures we put in about 15, 12 years ago provide that protection for the upper part of Coquina Beach. But for the lower end, we continue to have erosional challenges and loss of our structural stability of our jetties. We're going to be having an effort to remove these, which are posed to be dangerous and out of, out of service and no longer providing much of a function, removing them and replacing them with offshore breakwaters within a swim zone access. That way, we'll have more of it, we will always then change the geology of this beachfront to more of a natural beach. We're also going to be dealing with this, which has experienced along our entire shoreline, again, with the loss of the dunes and the sand that was covering up the protection. These rocks were placed between 1955 and 1962. They weren't engineered, they just cast in place. And they, they lost, they failed during that storm. We lost the sand over the top of them. We lost the vegetation to them. And the sand here ended up over here in the city. And so we propose to restore the protective value of this line along Cortez Beach with more likely this design with a dune and sheet-well seapole, continuation of the multi-use path and the parking areas, but changing the nature of this structure right here to continue to provide that protection. We're also going to be looking at rebuilding this jetty at the end of the pass. This is designed to keep the sand from the island going into the pass, of course. And it's 75 years old, and the time will come now where we're going to remove some of these crossbeams and restore the rock face across it, and restore the function and purpose of that jetty on the pass. And I have, any other questions? That'd be fine.
Are there any questions? Nope. All right. Thank you very much. And that was the last of the agenda items. I will open this up to citizen comments.
Ross, do you have anything?
You got anything? No? I don't think you qualify as a citizen anymore. You, you work here now. Nope. And there's nobody on the phone, so I will close citizen comments. And we'll go around the room. Is there, as for Garrett Fragerd? Commissioner?
No, just appreciate all the time. Thank you.
Mayor?
Yes, thank you again for this meeting. We really appreciate it. It was educational for us as well, and I thank everybody for, for their time.
Yeah, and I want to thank everyone for coming. I want to thank staff, clerks, mayors for all your presentations. I think there's a lot of actionable things we can all work on together. That's why I like having these joint meetings, start gearing up over the summer to figure out how we're going to fund that pier, start working on transit, about rerouting a trolley, talking more about your parking. There's a lot we can all do together, because at the end of the day, regardless of what city someone lives in or visits, we're all part of Manatee County, and we all need to work together. So thank you very much for coming down here. We're always available. I gave you all my cards, but I'm easily accessible. And we'll keep, we'll keep working and moving forward. And fingers crossed, if anything happens this storm, we'll be even better prepared this year than we were last year. So thank you all for coming. And if there's nothing further, we are adjourned.